Meaning, high school seniors will have to get the booster just to finish out their high school careers in school and with their classmates. This isn't science, it's coercion. I'm calling on the board to remove the quarantine policies that discriminate against students based on vaccine status and enact common sense once. If an unvaccinated student has symptoms, they should isolate, but only if they have symptoms, just as the policy stands for vaccinated students. Remove the new booster requirement for 18 and older. As a father with two kids in this district, it breaks my heart to hear about healthy students being forced to miss out on school activities because our school board voted for policy that intentionally excludes them. Fight for these students. Don't take away their high school experience to pressure them to take a product that we can all see isn't working as advertised. They all deserve to be in school. Make it happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Veron. Next on the list is Mr. DeForre, Dan DeForre.
Hello, I'm Dan DeForre. I'm a resident of Janesville and I live within Milton School District and was responsible for not reacting in a meaningful way to stop the fire. What this expression is intended to convey is to do something trivial and irresponsible in the midst of an emergency. This story reminds me of the Milton School District Leadership Team as it relates to the handling of the two-year-long COVID experience. In this case, the fire is the severely impacted futures of the children in this district. Based on the last DPI scorecard report, about six of the 10 students cannot perform at grade level in English Language Arts or Math. Milton's proficiency rates dropped more than 40% faster than the state average over the past two years. Based on Milton's overall accountability score, the district has gone from a top 30% performing district in the state to a bottom 30% performer in just two years. Unsurprisingly, an article in the Milton Courier stated recently, "Students are having mental health issues so severe, the district is bringing in outside counselors and therapists to help pandemic-troubled students in Milton schools." Additionally, the article stated suicide attempts by adolescent girls were higher by 51% in early 2021. Additionally, teacher morale is at an all-time low according to veteran teachers within the district. Now, for the trivial and irresponsible portion in the midst of an emergency, let's talk about the emergency. It's not COVID. As you have heard from many parents, and you will hear from many parents tonight, citizens as well as teachers, as well as from previous meetings, the emergency is how your poor leadership is negatively impacting the future of the children. Tonight, we hear about the new proposed COVID safety protocol metrics, which conveniently allows the board from having to discuss COVID protocols over the spring election cycle, but continues the now proven useless universal mask policy, which acts to exacerbate the true emergency they created. This leadership team continues to fiddle. While the futures of these children are negatively impacted by the extremely poor leadership, this must stop for the sake of the children. Thank you.
I haven't prepared anything, but I moved to Milton about six years ago and we really enjoy the community. I'm not looking to blame anybody for anything. Everybody has their own decisions and why they make the decisions they do. But a long time ago, I was kind of ignorant to certain things that I'm not ignorant to anymore. And I see what's going on around here and, you know, two weeks to slow the spread, it's a long way ago, a long time ago. And I want nothing more than my children to be safe and my family to be safe. I remember when this all started, I pulled my kids out three weeks before anyone pulled their kids out of school. And since then, my views have changed drastically. The information that we're all getting isn't the same. You know, a certain person has one view as they get their information from... One person, another person has other views and they get their information from somewhere else. But to speak up because, and not just my children, everybody's children. And this is a chance we have in our community to make a difference and make a change. I mean, look at us all. I mean, this is how I feel like my son feels every day when he comes to school, you know, separated, you know, can't see his beautiful face anymore. I just want this consideration and to get rid of the mask mandate and anybody who considers getting their children vaccinated, don't. It's a very dangerous thing we're into right now. And I plead with everyone to do their research, not on Google, you know? Go to Bitch U, you know? Dr. McCullough, go to High Wire, Dal Big Tree. I mean, look at the things, look at the information they're putting out there. We're not talking, we're talking, there's a tsunami of information now. And if you get your stuff from Google and you get your stuff from CNN or the local news or even the CDC, you're going to be on the wrong side of this. And I plead with you because I'm sure the people that do get their information there have children too. So, that's all I have to say.
I'm from Town of Harmony. I have a daughter who goes to Northside. I just had a few comments with your Milton Forward Plan. I had sent a few emails to Superintendent Dahman in the start of Northside going to Virtual 3 so far. I have not received a response back whatsoever. With the new CDC recommendation that all adults switch to N95 respirators, are you prepared to have them available for all the adults in the school system? Also, with the new CDC recommendation that they are changed out every single day if soiled or wet immediately? With the CDC recommending that children do not use an N95 respirator as they are not made small enough, what are your plans as the wearing of a regular surgical mask or cloth mask according to the CDC will not protect at all against COVID-19? I'm asking your plans as of, this is your mask policy, so not by choice of parents, I would suggest that you should be supplying the masks that are proper face coverings in which the CDC is saying right now. I don't see where I am able to get an N95 mask that will fit my child or with the availability of it. So she is certainly not being able to wear an adult N95 mask. Also, your current guidelines and the Milton Forward Plan going forward of allowing a sibling back into the school if vaccinated with another sibling at home that is positive, current for COVID-19 and symptomatic, what changes do you intend to make? That the CDC is now saying the vaccine does not protect against the spread of the virus, it only protects the individual who received the actual vaccine from becoming very ill. I for one am not and still not comfortable with your policy of allowing a family member back in school next to my unvaccinated child who has a sibling at home who is positive COVID, where they spend 12 of at least a 24-hour daily period with that other sibling in the house. Whether they are asymptomatic, it doesn't really matter. They are in a home with shared air and that other sibling is positive and sick with COVID. The safety of our children is not being addressed with your current policies and it is possible that your current policy has played a very big part in the high number of breakthrough cases in our district currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luick. Next on the list is April Johanek.
Hi there, I'm April. I'm reading on behalf of one of your school teachers. I am...
You can get up and share your own comments, but not mine from another person.
I'm not allowed to read.
You're not.
Oh, when was that updated?
It's part of the policy. After the last meeting, we looked at policy closely.
Okay. Well, then I'll speak on behalf of myself. And Shelley, thank you for the reminder of the masks. I didn't do so well last time. You're killing our families. We're crashing and we're burning. We just want mass choice. When you shut down Northside, my 11-year-old will not do the right thing if nobody's watching. So if you send him home and he's supposed to go online, I need my other kids. I work full-time, so does my husband. So I have to pull out my high schooler to stay home with him. I'm not even sure how many days she's missing this year, none of which she's been sick. My son hasn't been sick. None of us want anybody to get sick. We're all going to get COVID if we haven't already. Has everybody had COVID in here? We're doing pretty good. We're doing good. Please unmask our kids. I ask my kids and I actually beg them, can I please pull you from this district? I used to work for this district. I was incredibly proud of this school district. It's been two years. We're exhausted. It's time to unmask our kids and let's move on. I have to imagine that you do care about our kids' health. There's got to be something else, too. It's a real easy pawn to just put it off on Rock County. This is getting ridiculous. So please unmask our children. Stop quarantining the healthy. They feel like they have the plague. People don't even want to spend any time around a healthy child. And I've had multiple times where my child will come home and their staff or somebody in the school tells them, "You shouldn't see your grandparents over Christmas because what if you get them sick and what if they die?" The amount of pressure that that is for a 12-year-old child to carry with, so what if their grandparent does get sick? And what if they do die? And it had nothing to do with their grandchild? Those kind of comments need to stop. I've heard of a handful of kids ODing on bottles of Advil because they don't know how to cope. This isn't helping. Please unmask our kids.
My name is Karen Woodland. I have two daughters at the Milton High School. So tell me you created a vaccine mandate without telling me you created a vaccine mandate. The answer is this policy right here that our superintendent is proposing tonight with regard to vaccination thresholds. This is manipulation and coercion. This policy is also a moratorium on public comment for COVID policies until the metrics are met. So basically, you'll just silence the community you're meant to serve until your demands are met? This policy serves one purpose: to divide the community and coerce vaccination by pitting us against one another is despicable. I'm still trying to make sense of the data that was presented in the board docs with regard to the districts and active cases per 10,000. Every school district listed here has experienced an increase in cases. What's not clear on this is that half of these schools have some form of mask choice and their numbers are much lower than ours. Milton now has the highest numbers and the most restrictions. Tell me again how this is an indication that we should double down on the mitigation strategies that are clearly not working? I mean, if we just mask a little harder, right? Masks were in the news a lot the past couple of weeks, including one characterization that described them as little more than facial decoration. This board voted to remove masks last month. You said the goal was to give the younger grades the time needed to become fully vaccinated and you have. This board should keep their word and refuse to let the superintendent bully parents into compliance with the biggest medical experiment ever designed. Let's finally leave the disgusting facial decorations behind. They're clearly not helping and you're crippling an entire generation. Milton parents, I respect and fully support your informed decision to whatever you feel is necessary for your child. As parents, we should each get to make that choice. Before you vaccinate your healthy child with experimental gene therapy, please look up the story of Maddie DeGarry. She's a 12-year-old girl with her whole life ahead of her when her family enrolled her in Pfizer's clinical trial. Now wheelchair-bound, she receives all of her nutrition through a feeding tube. She was so severely injured that she could not complete the trial, so her data was conveniently left out. When you're done there, take a moment to look up the vaccine-injured group that Senator Ron Johnson assembled in Washington DC on November 2nd. You'll hear stories, heartbreaking stories, that no one should ever have to tell, much less endure. Then, if you're not too sick to your stomach, do just a quick search for the company who has paid the largest fines in history for lying and manipulating data and try not to be surprised when the answer is Pfizer, with a staggering $2.3 billion paid in fines for false claims. J&amp;J right behind them was $1.4 billion. Unbelievably, they've been forever released from liability for this product. They don't care if their experiment hurts your child. Don't be like Maddie DeGarry's mom.
Next on the list is Kristin Gibson.
I am a mother of three boys, two of whom are in the district. I am here in regard to the proposed safety protocol metric sheet that will be discussed tonight. Specifically, I am concerned and confused to see that there is a vaccination chart that ties district student vaccination rates to the review of COVID protocols. This is concerning to me because it comes across as enticing students and families to make a vaccination choice they would not normally make or feel comfortable with in the hopes of having the opportunity to possibly breathe without a mask at school. I believe this is a dangerous path to go down. Higher vaccination rates do not necessarily mean lower case levels. We've seen this throughout the world, in Israel, on cruise ships, in our own community. We know that whether a person has the COVID-19 shots or not, an individual can still spread the virus. Therefore, this ineffective metric system would cause more frustration and further division in our community and I am asking you to refrain from implementing it. In regard to masking, three out of the eight school districts in Rock County are 100% mask choice. Those districts include Beloit Turner, Parkview, and Clinton. According to the Rock County data, as of January 6, 2022, those districts have, on average, an 80% lower case rate versus Milton and the other four districts with universal 80% lower in case rates. This should be so encouraging to us. This data shows that mask choice can succeed at our local level if given the opportunity. Let's give our children the same opportunity for choice and success in Milton School District. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, board members. My name is Kathy Falso and I'm a parent of a kindergartner in the Milton School District as well as an even littler one. Here we are amid the highest numbers of COVID-19 positive cases our country, state, and local region have ever seen, yet we are debating whether we should still be wearing masks in a busy public building that we send our precious children and staff into daily. Due to the rapid rise in positive cases and resulting staff concerns that jeopardize the ability to keep our schools open for in-person instruction, it certainly is not the proper time to remove a crucial layer of our mitigation strategies. As I understand it, the administration is working closely with the Rock County Health Department to review the data, share this information with the community, and make decisions about protocols and appropriately timed next moves forward. Following their guidance seems like the right thing to do, considering they are the ones spending far more time and effort than the rest of us studying the data. I am aware of many others who share this view, but were unable to be in attendance tonight. I know that you have heard from some of them via email communication. While I understand that for some, personal choice may be at the top of their value system, we should not allow personal choice to supersede safety within our public school buildings. For those of us who do wear masks regularly right now, we do so for many reasons, of which I'll name a few. Source control, so that the mask wearer is not unknowingly spreading COVID-19 to you who may or may not be vaccinated, which then impacts your family. Protection of oneself and one's family members who cannot be vaccinated yet, who are or who are vulnerable medically. And because that is what is being requested of us in these special times under these special circumstances by the medical community and health authorities. At these board meetings, I have heard those who are active in eliminating the universal masking policies say that mask choice is the way to go because that is a win-win for all. You say, "I can choose not to wear mine and you can choose to continue to wear yours." The problem I have with that idea is that your child's choice to not wear a mask potentially impacts my child's well-being and that of my family and friends and the whole of the community. We know that masking works best when all parties are wearing them and masks are more effective at source control than they are at protecting oneself. If our two main principles guiding our decision-making are the following: keeping everyone in the school community as safe as possible, and continuing to offer quality in-person instruction, then please don't remove one of the strategies we have in place to control the spread of COVID-19 amongst our schoolchildren, staff, and community members until the time is right. I don't know yet when that is, nor may anyone else, but I am absolutely certain it's not right now in the middle of a major surge. Thank you for all your service and I wish this weren't such a hot topic so you could instead focus your attention on all the other great things you work to accomplish for the board. Thank you.
Next on the list is Amy Holden.
Hello, I'm Amy Holden and I live in this school district. Tonight, Mr. Dahman will go over the Rock County Active Cases Report. He will share with all of us how high Milton cases are. On January 6, they were 206.74. What he will fail to share with us all is who has the lowest case counts in Rock County. They are Parkview with 100.32, Beloit Turner with 109.98, Clinton with 109.98. Maybe this is coincidental? Let's take a look back in time. When I run the same report and do averages for all time, starting September 2 to December 2, guess which schools are at the top of the lower cases every single time? Parkview, Beloit Turner, and Clinton. What do all these schools have in common? Mask choice for all. How many of the board members or the superintendent knew this? How many of you reached out to see what these districts have done different or are currently doing? We have options to give mask choice. Give kids safe, keep kids safe in school, and get back on track to provide a high-quality education that they deserve. Our kids no longer need masks and we don't need the vaccines. Thank you.
My name is Mike Miller. My wife and I have two children that attend school here in Milton. I would like to start off by thanking the few of you that continue to fight for the rights of all of us parents and students combined. You haven't caved to the pressure of just following in the footsteps of the masses, but rather you choose to think for yourself. As for the rest of you, I and many others just like me see nothing but disappointment and failure. I have not attended every single meeting, but the ones that I have left a very ill feeling in my stomach. I watched as our elected board members just simply stood by and allowed every whim of the superintendent to be instated as if it was law, a man of which comes off failure from his last reins as acting superintendent. Is that really what you all want for our community? The protocol that is being pushed upon our district is a joke at best. It will tear our community apart and is being pushed by a man that isn't even part of it. I guess that's why he doesn't really care what happens as long as he gets his huge paycheck. At any other workplace, when someone's performance has failed this badly, they would be fired. In this case, his contract will likely be extended and will probably get a raise handed out to him at our expense, of course. So let's take a look at this protocol for a minute. Let's start with the most insane part. 90% jab rate being of one of the conditions before the board can even discuss COVID protocols again. I know this is just one of the ways there, but it shouldn't even be a discussion. Having an experimental shot pushed on our kids is not something that I or anyone should be giving you the right to do. This is nothing short of pinning the vaccinated against the unvaccinated, bullying at its finest. We are not allowed to discriminate based on color, gender, sexual preference, or whatever else triggers the overly sensitive these days, but we are going to make an exception for the people that have the guts to make their own medical decisions. Last meeting, one of you was asked about what percentage of younger children vaccinated would make you feel comfortable lifting the mask mandate. Your response was that you are not a medical professional and you didn't feel comfortable giving medical advice. You then voted for unmasking the older kids, but still muzzling the littles. In doing so, I would say you made a medical decision for all of them, one that should have been left to their parents. Our children are being used as pawns in a battle between mandates and free choice. At what point in society has it become acceptable to harm our children in order to give some their so-called safety blanket? Our children deserve much better. We've always been told to raise our kids as leaders. In voting for this new protocol and continuing to mask our children, we are teaching them that they just need to follow to be accepted, not making leaders at all, just more compliant followers. The mandate that Milton has been following obviously is a failure, otherwise we wouldn't still be discussing these issues. Maybe you should try stepping out of your comfort zone like so many other districts have had the courage to do, as it seems to be working for them. In fact, if you look at the numbers, every district in the county, which with choice, has lower positive cases than we do and we are on the verge of some of the most crazy protocols I've seen. Tonight, I am asking you to vote on two things, one being the obvious and giving us back our choice whether to wear a mask or not. The other is to vote back your power. As our elected officials, you should be the voice of the community, not just one man. So please vote to overturn the decision which gave Mr. Dahman the power to override your votes. I hope that you will make the right choice, one that leaves a medical decision-making to the parents of the district, freeing up more time and energy to concentrate on the rapidly declining academics in our schools.
Moving on to item number two, Superintendent Update. Mr. Dahman, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. There are a couple of things that I want to highlight on the Milton Forward Plan. Kim, on the board, if you can put up the active cases per 10,000 data document. All right. Move that a little closer.
I think you're just fine in the back row. If I can.
I'll use...
If you're a babe, I can't, but I'm right up here.
I'll use my microphone. I'll use my microphone and that should help everyone. In the document, on the active cases per 10,000, I'll be highlighting some of the data that's there and in other places. There also is a memo in board docs and I want to highlight some of the information that's in the memo and will bound between the information and some of the data pieces that are available. In recent weeks, our district and surrounding community have seen a dramatic increase in both the number of positive COVID cases and individuals who are required to quarantine. As of Friday of this past week, there are more school district of Milton students and staff actively positive with COVID-19 than at any time since the beginning of the pandemic. As of 3 o'clock today, those numbers have continued to increase and we'll take a look at that in a minute. On January 6, the Rock County Public Health Department reported that the number of new positive cases per day across the county was at its... was at its highest level since the pandemic began. Pediatric hospitalizations across the country are also at their highest rate since the beginning of the pandemic. And Rock County Public Health Department shared that the COVID-related hospitalizations and deaths continue to rise, with 18 additional deaths between December 10th and January 6th. On the document that's on the board, you can see that the number of active COVID-19 cases across our community has exploded over the past month, over the holiday season, from 66.72 per 10,000 residents back on December 1st, to now 206.74 per 10,000 residents as of January 6th. The Rock County Public Health Department has shared that the current wave of positive cases is expected to peak in late January. So they're anticipating that we're going to continue to see more and more positive cases, both among students, staff, and community members, for at least a couple more weeks. If you want to share the next document, Kim, is the dashboard document. On the dashboard document, you can see this is as of January, excuse me, as of January 6th, 2022, we had 76 students who were active positives in the district, and you can see the number of quarantined students, both from in-school exposures or outside of school exposures. And we have 13 staff members who were positive cases at that time. We did want to make sure that we shared with the board and the community up-to-date data. So as I mentioned, as of 3:00 today, the number of active cases among students has increased to 131. That's for kindergarten through 12th grade. And the number of staff has increased to 16. So those are the number of active positive cases at this time. And we also have many students and staff who are out awaiting a test result. The growing number of positive COVID-19 cases affect both the safety of our students and staff and our ability for our schools to remain open, since all of our services are affected, including classrooms, student support, food service, transportation, and building and grounds. Last week, on December 29th, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention updated their guidance on COVID-19 isolation and quarantine protocols. And in summary, that new guidance allows individuals who are close contacts or who have tested positive for COVID-19 to potentially shorten their isolation and quarantine periods from 10 days to 5 days, as long as certain criteria are met. On January 6th of last week, the Rock County Department of Public Health shared a new option for K-12 schools based on these CDC recommendations and timelines. We've worked closely with the Rock County Public Health Department to review and update our current protocols to incorporate these new recommendations. The county health department has shared that while Omicron variant has shown to be much more transmissible, the average incubation period is approximately four days. With that in mind, I'm recommending that we move to implement the new five-day isolation quarantine timelines, beginning on Wednesday, January 12th. If approved, beginning on Wednesday, January 12th, we would use tomorrow, Tuesday, January 11th, to contact students and staff who are already quarantined, to explain the new protocols to them and their potential return date. The criteria for a five-day return from isolation or quarantine are laid out in the documents included in Board Docs. One item to note is the requirement that those choosing to return from isolation quarantine must wear a face mask for the remainder of their 10-day period. With the continued burden that positive cases are having on local hospitals, and the knowledge that pediatric hospitalizations are at their highest rate compared to any point during the pandemic, and the stress that the large number of positive cases are having on our school system, I'm also recommending a continuation of all other current safety protocols, including universal masking at all School District of Milton facilities and events. A possible process for considering future changes to our safety protocols are included in Board Docs for the board's consideration. And Kim, if you can pull up the metrics document, please? The metrics document lays out what benchmarks would need to be reached in order for a consideration or a review of our safety protocol. And I want to clear up one thing that a few people shared. A couple of our speakers today stated that a certain vaccination rate would have to be met before any consideration would take place, and that that could potentially extend all the way through the spring. I want to make sure that it's clearly understood by the board and the community that the safety protocol metrics aren't a A, B, and C, having to all be met in order for the review to take place. It's an A, B, or C. And I'll walk through that and explain a little bit more about what that means. On that safety protocol metrics, three different metrics are identified. The active positive COVID-19 cases among school district residents, and that's something that is shared out at every school board meeting. And highlighted in the document are the last eight, the current count and the last eight. So you can see going back to late October at 43.47 positive cases. You can see that it stayed, although it increased. It increased at a fairly slow amount through November and early December. But then on December 9th, as families were coming back from Thanksgiving break, that came up to 93.51. By mid-November, 127. By late November, 143. And now, as our students and staff and all of our residents are returning from the holiday break, that's up to 206.74 positive cases per 10,000 residents. The metric that's tied to that would be if the number of active positive cases either moves below 125 or above 175 for two consecutive weeks, the district will review the safety protocols that are in place at that time. If the number of positive cases, active positive cases among district residents continues to increase at the rate it is, the board may want to consider increasing our safety protocol. If it moves in the other direction and gets below that 125 for two consecutive weeks, then we could review and consider decreasing our safety protocol. As you can see from the trend data, the below 125 had been the case for extremely long number of time until the last three readings there. Similarly, the number of active positive cases among students and staff in our schools is the second metric that's used. We share that out weekly in our dashboard every Friday. You can again see on the second page there, the history, and it mirrors in ways the residents to the district data in that it stayed fairly steady for quite a while. Saw an increase when we came back in mid-November, or excuse me, in mid-December. And then again, coming back after the holidays, an increase at the time that this data was put together of 76 positive cases for students and 13 positive cases for staff. And again, now those numbers as of today are 131 positive cases for students and 16 positive cases for staff. The benchmark that's tied to that would be if the number of positive cases goes down to the level that it was a little over a month ago, to below 50 active positive cases among students or staff, or it moves above 100 for two consecutive weeks, the district will review the safety protocols that are in place at that time. And then the third metric is the vaccination rates. And you can see there that the number of school-aged children who are fully vaccinated at those different age groups are 33.9% for our 5- to 11-year-olds, 58.2% for ages 12 to 14, and 77.2% fully vaccinated for ages 15 through 18. And the definition used of fully vaccinated does not include any boosters. It's having the full initial series of whichever vaccination took place. The levels to review the protocols at each of those grade, at each of those age levels are 50% for ages 5 through 11, 70% for ages 12 through 14, and 90% for ages 15 through 18. But I want to again reinforce that none of those vaccination metrics would need to be met for us to review our safety protocol. If either the active positive cases among school district residents or the active positive cases among students and staff or the vaccination rates are reached, if it's approved in that manner, then that would trigger the review of the data. So just to review and recap that, some of the information that I've shared, the positive COVID-19 cases are rising rapidly among our students, staff, and community. The resulting staffing concerns threaten our ability to keep our schools open for onsite instruction. And keeping our schools open for onsite instruction is extremely important for us. The new isolation quarantine timelines will allow students and staff to return to school or to work sooner, provided they meet the stated criteria. And continuing with our current safety protocols will both help protect the safety of our students and staff, as well as increase our likelihood of maintaining onsite instruction. So there are three recommended motions that are listed there, and I'll turn things over to the board for questions and comments.
Well, yeah, I've got a few. You said that, you've made this comment a few times, pediatric hospitalizations across the country. Do you know what the pediatric hospitalizations are in Rock County?
I don't know what the specific pediatric hospitalizations rates are in Rock County. The news came out just within the last couple of days that those pediatric hospitalizations are at their highest level from throughout the pandemic across the U.S. I do know that the pediatric doctors that serve Milton students are strongly in favor of keeping our current masking protocol and all of our safety protocol in place.
Okay. The, you stated that there were 18 deaths between December, or December, excuse me, December 10th through January 6th. Is that, is that supposed to be like the highest number we've seen?
The increase or the?
Yeah, it's 18 total, right?
And can you ask the question one more time?
Sure. Between December 10th and January 6th, you said that there were 18 additional deaths. Is that the total that there were, 18, between that time?
18 additional COVID-related deaths between that time period.
Okay. And was that, is that supposed to indicate it was the highest that we'd seen?
No, I didn't indicate that that was the highest. That was just the additional deaths during that timeframe.
So I guess I'm most concerned with the metrics, obviously. I'm really, I'm really struggling to understand how we went from you, and albeit that you took it away at the meeting, but you recommended last meeting for mask choice, and you had, you know, several things with that motion. And while you reversed your decision at that, at that meeting, now we're seeing metrics being put into place to limit our ability to discuss this issue. Like, what is, what was the thinking with the turnaround?
I want to make sure it's clear on one thing. At that board meeting in December, if you recall, I did not recommend that we make a change to our, to our universal masking. I had initially put into, on the, on the week before that board meeting, put in, put that into my recommendation. And then that was the day on that Monday when we began to see a large number of positive cases come through, and I spoke to that at that last board meeting.
Yep.
And then the second part of your question, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, why, why the change? Why the flip? This is a very drastic flip. From, from possible recommendation of mask choice, because you did have that recommendation until you reversed your decision at the meeting. Now we're seeing that you're wanting to implement metrics, which basically take away our ability to talk about it unless we meet certain goals.
Yeah, I see two parts to that question, so I'll answer both parts of that. Why a change to where we were in mid-December? I think that the data demonstrates a very clear need for the change. Our number of posi, and it's laid out in the memo. The, the number of positive cases across our community, the number of positive cases among students and staff, make it, to me, clear that we need to, that this isn't the right time to take a step back from our current protocol. I think the fact that in mid-December, when those cases were lower, I was ready to make a recommendation. And when we see this wave end and us seeing those number of positive cases decreasing, I'll be ready to make that same recommendation again. The reason for the change is because that's not what we're seeing right now. That's not what the data shows, and it's not what, what the experts are recommending. And the other thing that's different right now than it was back then is that our schools are really struggling with the number of staff that are out. I mentioned before, our different departments, it affects teachers, it affects building and grounds, food service staff. We had to make changes to our transportation. And although, although those aren't our employees, our partnership with Fairlight Way requires having bus drivers available to get kids to and from school. So one of the things that I wanted to do if this question came up was ask a couple of our principals to come up and share a little bit more details about what that looks like in our schools and what, not, not just our admin team, but all of our teachers and all of our staff are dealing with. Because if the number of positive cases continue to rise among staff, we won't have the ability to keep our schools open for onsite instruction. And it's vitally important that we do everything that we can, especially for our youngest students, to keep them in school. We've heard that repeatedly from families, and that's very, very much at the forefront of our decision-making. So Principal Kramer and Principal Billhorn, if you could come up and share a little bit on what things are looking like in the schools right now?
Good evening. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes, myself and Mr. Billhorn, to help maybe build a little bit of perspective for board members and what it is down at the, I'll say, ground level or down in the trenches, where we're doing the day-to-day work. Sometimes that can be a difficult thing to do, because if you're not there, it's hard to understand, much like if you're to watch the news and see earthquake, flooding, right? You can empathize with those people, but if you're not there where it's happening, sometimes that can be difficult. So having said that, I'm going to think about having a sub in our building, a substitute, no matter what position it's at. You know, back a couple of years ago, there's always a ripple effect. So for example, second-grade teachers out, that ripple effect, that team, second-grade teachers, jumps in to help educate that sub on what's going on in the building. Kids act a little bit differently, it ripple effects into the lunchroom, et cetera. Fast forward to where we are right now with sub shortages, multiple staff members out, no matter if it's food service custodians, paraprofessionals, teachers, bus drivers. That ripple effect is kind of turned into, equate it to being in the dells, in the wave pool, okay? With those large waves and trying to keep your head above water. And so my point here is that I want you to understand, and Jeremy's going to speak to it a little bit deeper, is that it's getting much more difficult when you're four to five people short each day. People see Mrs. Kramer walk down the hall, and they know that it's an opportunity for me to dig in and look for extra hands-on deck. And I don't want them to start turning around and running the other way. And so I'm very concerned about the sustainability of us keeping our schools being effective and efficient so that we can meet the needs of our students. And Jeremy's going to talk a little bit more in depth.
All right. Thanks, Jen. You know, Mr. Doman asked to kind of describe what has it been like with large numbers of students and staff gone. And, you know, I guess I want to say too, with the examples that I'm giving and Jen is giving, this is not just at the middle school or the high school, and at East, this is reflective of the entire district. You know, I'll give an example. Last, last Friday was, it's the busiest we've been in the last two years, last week and this week with regards to the pandemic. Last Friday, we had seven unfilled teacher subs, or positions, as teachers that did not get a sub. get a sub, we had five paraprofessionals that did not get a sub. And so what, what does that look like? What does that really mean? Well, it, it starts about an hour, hour and a half before the school day starts, when you start to, some of those, many of those were the morning hours, where staff are sick, and you realize that subs are not going to take the position. And it begins, you begin to organize what that coverage can be. And it is, in the high school, we can do interfaculty subbing, that's teachers that, you know, we have a five-period day, plus a study flex, but teachers teach the study flex in four class periods, they have one-period prep, that I'm going, and I ask large numbers of teachers not to take their prep that day, and they teach those classes. Last Friday, too, it wasn't just interfaculty subbing, all the administration team taught classes, I had Matt Gosdick from food service, Ryan Ruggles and his assistant Jessica Sheets came up down from district office, we've had members from district office and all our admin team that helped serve lunches as well. So the morning, our mornings are circled around, first getting staffing set, and it's, as challenging as it's been, that's not, it's, despite a great job that we have had HRs done trying to secure subs, that's not the issue, it's just that this is, this is a special season right now, and it's a challenging season right now. The, beyond this, just the, the staff, then it's also just working with the information coming in of students. Last Friday, we had 237 students who are absent at Milton High School. Okay, currently we have 53 students that are positive at Milton High School. And, you know, so what does that mean? You know, it's the contact tracing, it's the questions that are asked. Each one of those are individual students, they each have an individual schedule, so that's communicating with each of those individual students, what their return date is going to be, what their homework assignments are going to be, communicating, in that case, 53 different sets of teachers that all have a different schedule about how to work with their, how to get their work when they're gone. It's also 53 different sets of students that have, are going to miss things, they're going to miss the show choir competition, they're going to miss the, the band practice, they're going to miss those, that game, they're going to miss those opportunities. We have many people in this room that we've had, I've had that conversation with, which we've talked about, what does that actually look like? And, and those are disappointments, and sometimes that, it's been a long season right now. And, and, and working through that every single day, I give, I commend my staff at the high school, I commend the staff in the district. We have, you know, distributed job duties, too, there's five people at full-time, working, last week and this week, working on trying to get all the data correct, between Brittany Coots, the district nurse, her assistant Heather Jones, our administrative assistants in the high school, and now admin as well, that work on getting everything straight. That's just, that's our job, right? That's our job, but if you want to know what it's like right now, that's what we're experiencing. I'll also say, our faculty director, Kevy Shap, Jeff Dupa, his coaching staff and administrators, they're doing amazing, their advisors are doing amazing job, not knowing who is going to be there next. But it's, you know, we try to create, I was mentioning before, too, that in high school, that's year one, four-year experience, we do the best we can to have the best experience possible. But certainly with the amount of, of time, staff and students that are gone, it does create that challenge. So I guess if there's any questions you have, or Kramer, or I, we'd be happy to take them.
And I think, it's indisputable that you guys do a phenomenal job, and this is not an easy time for anyone. I don't think I'm arguing that. I, I need to rephrase my question, I guess. You went from the possibility of recommending mask choice to now you're putting metrics on us with the ability to be able to even just discuss this issue. This is an ongoing situation, you've said it multiple times yourself, where this is, this is all changing. Every two weeks, it could change. So why are we, why are we limiting the number of times that we can discuss this, or the, the number of opportunities that we have to discuss this? That's, that's my question. You're, you're, it, it's not about, it's not about like, this, obviously it's safety, but it's not about mask choice and, and not, you know, and mandating masks, it's about you putting in place metrics that determine when and if we can discuss this, and that, to me, is not moving forward.
I think, I guess in answer to that, I'm, I'm not putting in place any metrics, I'm bringing metrics to the board for the board's consideration. And, and I think that those metrics were designed in a way to encourage the possibility that that, that those are going to be revisited. If you look at the, the number aligned with the number of active cases across our community with residents, having that at 125, as, once we hit the peak of our increases and that number starts to go down, we should hit that fairly soon. The, the active positive cases among students and staff at 50 is a higher level than we've been almost throughout the entire pandemic. So rather than restricting, or potentially restricting, the board's ability to revisit this, and, and even with these metrics in place, the board at any time could make a decision to revisit if we still stay within that window of 125 to 175, and that window of, of 50 to 100. Even if we did stay in, in that window for a long time, the board could always make a decision to, to review the safety protocol that we have in place. So the metrics are designed to provide some, some parameters around when we would bring that back, but it's not in any way to restrict, because they're, they're designed in a way to encourage that topic coming back at future board meetings.
I see this as more of an opportunity to, to actually discuss it, because we'll be looking at it more frequently instead of just the once a month. We'll be able to look at the numbers. We've had people in the past meetings ask, what numbers will we make decisions? I don't think we've have any steady, there's three different options here to look at, it's not all three or just one. It could be any of those where we could revisit and look at this at any time. You know, Rock County, we're at the highest in Rock County for our residents, and I think people are confusing that with our schools versus our citizens that are in our borders of our district. I've seen schools running out of rapid tests this last week in Rock County, there's many schools not having testing, all they have is the PRC test to be using now, and there's schools that are also reversing their masking policy because of the numbers. So we're not alone in this. Rock County's seeing this huge inflation of numbers, and to put it all on the weight of one person in one district, every district is struggling with this. They're struggling to keep teachers, they're struggling to keep their schools open, keep kids, some schools are going to hybrid, so the kids that are out are, you know, doing one thing or another. So every school's struggling with this decision, it's not just ours. We just happen to have the highest residents in the county with the highest rates right now.
Mr. Domon, could I ask a question of clarification on the vaccination metric? So there's three different age levels there. Are you saying that in your recommendation that we would need to reach the, the goal for all three levels for that to be considered? Or would it just be if we reached the goal for, let's say, the five to 11-year-olds, for example?
The intent of, of having separate metrics for each age level is so that it could be, could be considered separately if that's what the board prefers. I think I, a neighboring district has set a vaccination rate of 80% for all students and staff as their level to, to revisit the issue, and I didn't feel like that was something that potentially could be reached anytime soon for us. So we set levels that are, that show growth at each of those age levels, but it definitely is something that, that could be set for a certain variable, if that would be what the board would desire.
Can I ask, do you honestly think that we're going to get to 50, 70, or 90% at each of those levels?
I don't know if we are or not, and that's part of why it isn't a requirement for us to make any change. It's, the, the medical and public health experts continue to strongly recommend vaccination. I think one of the things that we've seen is that the Omicron variant is, does spread more quickly, and that's, that's pretty clear, and it also passes more quickly. And I think some of the things that we've built in to this recommendation are based on both of those things. The increased spread makes it more likely that people are going to catch it, and we're seeing that much more now among close contacts, that many, many more close contacts are, are testing positive. But we also know that the, the average period of time that it's transmissible is right around four days, which means that bringing people back in five days rather than 10 days is more doable now than it was earlier.
Okay. Why do we need to have, I guess I was arguing that we do not need to have the vaccination rate, if we're going to do this at all, that needs to be gone. Because we, we know for a fact that people with the vaccine then still transmit the virus. The CDC sent a vaccine out in, in the director's season, so we, and I think it was stated, and it's been confirmed before, but the vaccine only protects the person who gets it, but doesn't protect anybody else from getting, from the vaccinated person. So I don't think having a vaccination rate as part of the protocol, if we're going to have a metric at all, I kind of disagree with, it's, it's, I don't think that needs to be a part of it. We're, we're to the point now, and the argument was made, you know, last time, Dave's motion, that the, the younger kids will have had a greater opportunity to get vaccinated if they so choose. The, the high schoolers have had the opportunity since last May, middle schoolers, June, July. So if, if they're going to get the vaccine, they're going to get the vaccine, but having a metric listed, even if, even if it's, it doesn't have to be that, it's still listed, and so you're, you're saying that that's a possibility, and I think it's very confusing and ambiguous to, to the public. So you have to clarify tonight to us, like exactly what that, so I think if we're going to have metrics at all, it needs to be laid out more clearly, and I just strongly disagree with having a vaccination rate. We cannot control, you're adding metrics for which we can't control. We can't control transmission, we cannot control whether someone gets vaccinated, it's not, it's not a smart hope to have. I don't think that 80% is working for Jamesville, and, and the districts that have mask choice, and whether that's an argument or not, they, they clearly have fewer cases, and they're clearly doing much better than we are at this moment.
Again, that's in their community, and that, the numbers aren't there for the schools.
Okay, then let's get the numbers, please.
I'm just saying, that's, you can't, you can't say that that's the school, that's the community.
That's a, that's a fair point, but it's the community and the school's part of the community, and if that's the numbers that we're going to go off of every meeting when we talk about it, then that's the numbers that we need to be, and we're comparing.
I'm just saying, you keep talking like it's the schools and as the community, the residents within the district.
Yes, but that's the number that.
So you're muted, if you're going to talk on mute?
Um, I guess.
I, I just don't think that we need it. If you want to, if you want to take away mask choice because you don't feel that it's the right time, and the board decides that that's what we want to do tonight, that's, that's one thing, but we're not at a point where we need to, we need to add anything to limit discussion, or, or even moderate discussion based off of, based off of where we're at with our numbers and, and vaccination percentages, so.
Mostly understand where you're coming from, but not, although it would be preferential that the vaccine rate would go up, nobody's required to, what's that?
Yeah, use your microphone.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was on. Sorry. There we go. While it's certainly preferable if additional people got vaccinated, no one has to for these benchmarks to be met. I mean, you're not, if another person doesn't get vaccinated, if the cases decrease, I mean, I, I think this is really a, an approach to mitigating the, the current variant, and to Shelley's point, you know, the part we do control is, in some fashion, is the number of students and staff that are infected, and that's being addressed directly there for the rest of these things to come to pass. And, and I think taken as a whole, the, the ORE is really the key item there. And then echoing, this is Kramer and Mr. Billhorn's comments, the biggest concern, and I think the one thing that regardless of your stance on this, is that we want to keep these buildings open, and for the next two to three or four weeks, or whatever, that this quick surge up generally is followed by a quick surge down, when things grow exponentially like this, the goal is how do we keep Mr. Billhorn and his staff, and Mrs. Kramer and her staff, and all the other administrator staffs in place at an adequate level to make sure that my kids and your kids and everyone else's kids can go sit down at a desk and receive instruction here the next few weeks while we wait for the worst of this to be behind us. So again, I, I understand what you're saying with can we hit these numbers on the, on the vaccination rates, and, and I, I understand your frustration with them, because they, they are high, but again, we, we don't have to meet any of them, and I would prefer that we did, but it's not a requirement that they be met for us to revisit this. And to the earliest point, we can revisit this at any time, if it's on, if we decide to talk about it, we can talk about it, but these are other benchmarks, and we've had people in the audience in past months and weeks say it would be great to have some kind of benchmarks to look at, and here are some, and up until the last few weeks, the, the first two benchmarks have consistently been within the realm of where we've been at. The only exception being here since mid-December until the present.
I would make a motion to take no action tonight on this particular issue.
There is a motion on the floor to take no action tonight on this particular issue. Is there a second? Right, hear me? Hearing none, the motion dies.
Again, Mr. Huff, if you ask people to put their masks up.
Respectfully, I would ask that everyone to properly wear their masks, please, over nose and, and mouth. Thank you for complying. I would remind the board that there are three suggested motions for the things that were just presented to us in the discussion we've just had.
Rich, I'd like to thank you for putting all this info together. I'd also like to thank Jen and Jeremy for sharing with us tonight. I've heard many stories from people all over the community, a lot of staff, and I know that there are a lot of people working hard, pulling double duty in order for us to keep our schools open, whether that's bus drivers, teachers, paras, food service, whatever. So I just wanted to give a shout out, to thank all those people for allowing us to keep our schools open. I definitely think that now is not the time to be loosening our, our protocols, and so I'm going to make the recommended motions. I'd like to make a motion that we implement the new isolation quarantine protocols as presented, effective January 11th, 2022. I make a motion that we continue all other safety protocols that are currently in place, including universal masking at all school district of Milton, facilities and events. And I also make a motion that we adopt the safety protocol metrics as presented.
Before we move forward on any of those, Mr. Domon, I believe I heard you say that you wanted the, the first motion to be January 12th, is that correct?
Yeah. Initially, we were looking at January 11th, and then determined that if that is approved, we would need to get in touch with the full staff and families to update them on a new timeline. So I would recommend that that be amended to, to January 12th.
So Rick, for the record, could you restate that, using the January 12th?
Yes.
Just, just the first motion, yeah?
I make a motion that we implement the new isolation quarantine protocols as presented, effective January 12th, 2022.
Thank you. So just for procedural, procedural clarity, could we do these one at a time, please? So let's just stick with the first one. The motion on the floor made by Rick is to implement the new isolation quarantine protocols as presented, effective January 12th to 2022. So the motion's been made by Rick, seconded by Shelley. Is there any more discussion, any questions on that particular motion?
I do. So back in July and August, Mr. Domon, I asked what would be done to assist students in quarantine to ensure that they don't fall behind, because there's no virtual option. to ensure that they don't fall behind, because there's no virtual option. There was no plan put in place, and I've received word from many in the community that their children are suffering because they have no good communication, because the, the teachers are under stress from having to work in the classroom and deal with the high numbers of students who are out or have been out. Do we have something that we could put in place that would sort of alleviate that stress on both students and staff?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend if you, if you get contacted by community members who feel like their needs aren't being met, either refer them to me or to the principal. I've gotten a couple emails from parents who felt like there wasn't as much support for their students as needed. And I've put them in touch with the principal so that the principal can, can find out what specifically those parents are looking for. And in the cases that have come to my attention, our principals and our teachers have done a really nice job of, of making sure that students get the support that they need.
Okay, once again, I didn't say that that hasn't been done. And I certainly do send those people to the appropriate administrator. But do we have something in place moving forward that these students and, and staff can use that would better help students not fall behind and staff not be so stressed?
I think it's, what each student needs is, is very individualized. So what we would continue to do is have that parent and that student work with their individual teachers on staying updated on what they miss and anything that they need when they come back. With the new five-day isolation and quarantine guidelines, if that is approved, that would make that a much easier process, both for students and for staff.
Yep, and I would actually like to make an amendment to that motion.
It's already been seconded.
Yes, but I can make an amendment. Thank you. I would like to amend the policy to state that all students, whether they're vaccinated or not, must quarantine for the five days, given that we know that if you're vaccinated, you can still transmit and still contract the virus.
That's not an amendment, likely an amendment. It's a striking of a word or words or a phrase, not to change the entire motion. If this motion doesn't pass, you can make that motion.
Well, so I'm striking the does not quarantine part.
Of the first motion?
The, the first motion is that we were dealing with, excuse me, to implement the new isolation and quarantine protocols. Yeah, so I'd like to strike the part where it says students do not need to quarantine and eliminate that portion of it.
I don't see where it says that students don't need to quarantine. It says the motion that Rick made was move that we implement the new isolation quarantine protocols as presented, effective January 12th, 2022.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I'll make the motion after.
Any more discussion or questions?
Mike, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to at least address a couple of different things as it relates to the motion, and I guess just in general, overall. So I want, just as everyone else does in this room, for the kids to stay in school. Like, I think that is the most important piece here. And I want kids to be safe, and I want staff to be safe. We've received several emails from staff, and I feel like they are indeed a part, a big part, almost the heart of the district, and their opinions and concerns, they're important as well. And I think Mr. Billhorn did say it well, this is a special season. And again, this is not the right time to remove the mask. I don't agree with tying vaccination rates to COVID protocol policy at all. I, I agree with Leslie. I think, and again, tying it back to, then is, at that point, we can review protocol or again, one, two, or three, I don't agree with that. I think the board should indeed be able to address the mask choice every time we meet, if that's the case. But as it's been said, there, this group especially, that's here in the, in the room, you have asked us, what is the metrics? Give us metrics, give us metrics. So now that the superintendent has given some metrics, and again, maybe we don't like that, right? But, but again, we have to at some point, you can't have it both ways. I am trying to be the voice of reason here tonight. I'm going to make the best decision, I feel, with what I know right now, tonight, just like the rest of us. All of us are just going to try to make the best decision we can tonight. I have never made this political, and I won't. So if you listen to me or anyone else, and you leave here, and you're remotely half-satisfied with my decision, then tonight, that's probably the best I'm going to do for you. But the kids need to stay in school, and they need teachers to teach them. And the numbers are telling us, at this point, that is what is at risk here, right? Along with our kids' safety. So again, I, I, I won't support the motion if in fact we're tying vaccination rates to COVID protocol policy. I don't agree with that. But also, I can tell you right now that it is not the time to remove the mask from your children. And I don't know when it is, but it's not tonight for me. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on that first motion? All right, I will repeat it. Motion made by Rick that we implement the new isolation quarantine protocols as presented, effective January 12th, 2022. It was seconded by Shelley. We will, we will roll call vote. We'll start with Shelley. Jen?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Mike is a yes. Leslie?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
And is, does Joe have the ability to vote?
Joe, are you there, Joe?
He should be able to vote in the chat.
Can you go in the chat box, Joe? And have your mic on, hold on, I need my mic so we can see where Joe.
Sorry, I was muted. For, for the record, Joe, Joe's vote was a yes, and so that motion passes. So we will move on to the second motion. So the second motion was made by Rick, that we continue all other safety protocols that are currently in place, including universal masking at all School District of Milton facilities and events. Looking for a second. It's been seconded by Shelley. Is there any other discussion, questions?
Has, have any of the board members here called or spoken to any of the other schools that have mask choice? Yes?
No.
I, I have had a conversation with a board member from Parkview.
So how can they, have they explained how they are able to be mask choice and be according to their community numbers, more successful than we are?
I don't have the answer specifically to what it is.
I'm substituting a lot of the districts, but I just don't, they've had a huge number of cases.
Okay. So I guess, I'm not, I guess my question is, how, how do we, our, our, our protocols at this point have clearly not been working because we've had two schools that have had to close. So are we not willing to at least attempt a different option here? That's my question. Are we not willing to, to try? I mean, science is about testing and trying, trying. When, when something's not working, you got to remove part of something to figure out which part is not working. So are we not willing to try?
Is that a question for me?
No, I'm asking the board.
I am not willing to try at this point.
Okay, we know that this is a wave. It's been stated that this is where it's going to be rapidly declining, okay? It's come up, it's going down. So if I were to make a motion that said that we would allow mask choice for all students and staff beginning, I don't even know the date, January 24th, 2022. Well, last, at the last meeting, it was said that we could discuss it every two weeks without metrics. So what has changed?
You're asking what's changed? Well, Leslie, look at the numbers, that's what's changed.
That's what.
I mean, that's, that's what's changed. We're at a totally different place now than we were on December 13th, when we had our last board meeting. I remembered, I remember Jen specifically asking the question, if things, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, because I don't want to put words in your mouth. If things change, Mr. Domon, do you have the ability to make changes? And Mr. Domon said, yes, the board has given me, am I, am I quoting you correctly?
You are absolutely quoting me correctly, and that was why I asked.
I figured it was. So when you ask what's changed, that's what's changed.
Okay, and in the past, we have, we have made motions that have been for the future. So if, if I make a motion that says, you know, let's, let's, all right, how about I just do, I move.
There's a motion on the floor that's already been seconded.
Okay.
You can't make another motion until that's been voted out.
Then let's vote.
Well, we are still discussing it. Is there any more discussion? Sorry, Carrie, is there any more discussion? Okay, just so we're all clear, there's a motion on the floor that we continue, made by Rick, seconded by Shelley, that we continue all other safety protocols that are currently in place, including universal masking at all School District of Milton facilities and events. Again, we will do a roll call vote. This time, we'll start with Dave.
Yes.
Leslie?
No.
Mike is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Joe? Joe, for the record, is a yes, that motion carries. We are now down to the third motion that was also made by Mr. Mullen. The motion was to move that we adopt the safety protocol metrics as presented. Looking for a second for that motion. Okay, motion's been made by Rick, seconded by Shelley. We can open up discussion and questions. Well, it wouldn't be an amendment, then, it would be a whole new motion.
And I, I do have a question for Rich. Rich, if, if one of these is met, it, it talks about, again, then being able to revisit it. If one of these was met, based on the way that is written now, and if a motion is approved, would that give you the authority to go ahead and make that change? Let's say the number's moved. Sure. Sure, I just, I would like to know again, if in fact, this, this motion is indeed approved, do you then have the ability, if in fact, the numbers drop to within the, the protocol? Let's say this happens on Wednesday, right after we meet. Do you have the ability then to, to change without, without obviously this group then having to meet?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
And the board has given me the ability to make changes in either direction on, on our protocol.
All right, I apologize for the glitch here. I think they don't understand what's challenging us technologically. You know, the discussion is, it couldn't be more relevant to me. I'm home because I'm under COVID isolation. And that's just, you know, that's nothing I need to keep private or anything. But that's, that's why I'm in this position right now, so to see my board meeting. So first of all, I won't do this often, so I'm going to summarize some of what I've heard and what I wanted to offer, and then we can move on from there. I, I agree with some of the, several of the comments that my colleagues have made tonight, and I'll reiterate the important points. To me, absolutely goal number one is to keep these kids in school and keep these schools open. And most folks realize, of course, that I voted for mask choice a month ago. And I think I made a comment at that time that I reserve the right to change my mind. And nothing like a skyrocketing pandemic to change a person's mind. And that's exactly what has landed in our laps, is the COVID numbers doing what they have done to us. So I am, I am strongly in favor of continuing our mask protocols for, for a period of time, and I guess I want to leave that open. I, I struggle a little with the discussion so far relative to these metrics. I think we should discuss our protocols at every opportunity. And it's great to have the parameters about case numbers, whether it's community or school-related. And that should not alone trigger us to change our parameters, but those should be a piece of the data that we use. I wholeheartedly agree with Jennifer that the metrics relative to vaccination rate, while we should be provided that data, I do not think that should be part of any decision framework to change or relax protocol. I, I, I want that data, but we're all going to filter that and use it in a little different fashion. So I, it's an extremely polarizing issue, and I think that the, the community comments were spot on. And I, I'm not comfortable giving, giving weight, if you will, to a, to a vaccination threshold amongst any particular age group. I should, I, I feel like we should encourage them, but maybe we can incentivize them, but it should never be part of our decision threshold or triggers, in my mind. So to that matter, if this, I think I heard that this third motion had been moved and seconded. And so my comments specific to this motion would be not to support it unless someone would be willing to amend it. And I'm going to let you do that from the floor because it's too challenging from my perspective. Do not include the vaccination, but let's turn maybe the other two pieces relative to case counts in our, in our software.
If, if we take that off, the likelihood of us achieving one of two is by definition less than one of three. So if, if we take it off, the likelihood of us making a change, all things being equal, is longer than shorter. So if, if nobody likes it, that's fine, and I would judge it's the least likely threshold that we will meet. However, the point at which we will take action in the absence of it being there is longer than with it there as it is. So if the goal is to go back to mask preference, choice, whatever, which we had talked about, and I had supported. which we had talked about, and I had supported it pre-Omicron, having it there increases the likelihood of us doing something sooner than if it's not there. I guess in the end, I don't care. But it seems silly to take it out when the goal that it's intended to achieve becomes less likely in the absence of it.
I agree with Dave. I don't really understand the point of taking it out. But Rich, could you please speak to why you included it?
Yeah, the question was to speak to why it was included. We've tried really hard throughout the pandemic to follow the advice of the medical and public health experts with the CDC, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, and the Rock County Public Health Department. All of those organizations include being vaccinated as a very important part of a layered safety protocol. There are some districts that require vaccination of their staff. We certainly aren't at any point thinking that that would be a direction that we would want to go, that we would require vaccination of students or that we would require of staff. But we strongly recommend that people get vaccinated. And if they have concerns, that they consult with their own doctor. We've stated that publicly many, many times, that that's a strong recommendation that we have because it's been shown, and it's showing really clearly right now, that being fully vaccinated decreases the severity of COVID cases. It makes someone less likely to be hospitalized and less likely to die. And I think we have an obligation for our students, staff, their families, and our community to recommend that people do that, but still allow them the ability to make that choice on their own, which is the approach that we've taken the entire time.
If it were the only metric, I would have a problem with it. But I'm in agreement with Dave. It's one of three. It's very likely the other two will be reached before. But if that one's reached, then we also have that under our tool belt to use to look at the protocols. So any more discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor made by Rick. Shelley, you were the second, seconded by Shelley, to adopt the safety protocol metrics as presented. We will do a roll call vote. We will start with Joe. Joe is a no for the record. Shelley?
Yes.
Jen?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Mike is a yes. Leslie?
No.
And Dave?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you for the respectful and quality discussion and questions. And Mr. Dahman, thank you. And you give the administration for all the work that you've done.
I do have a question because I want to go back to the isolation policy. My concern is that we do know that even if you are vaccinated, you can still spread COVID, whatever variant it is. More likely the Omicron. But so my concern is having the do not need to quarantine section in the isolation policy. I think we need to eliminate that completely. And anyone who tests positive or shows symptoms needs to isolate or quarantine for five days and then, you know, follow the protocols thereafter. So I guess I would need to make a motion regarding that because I couldn't amend it before. Correct?
I said you can make a new motion if that one didn't pass, but it passed.
Can I? Can I make a motion, though, to?
To undo the motion that we just passed?
To amend the policy?
You don't, you can't amend something after it's passed.
Okay.
You can amend, that's what I said. If it doesn't pass, then you can make a different motion.
Okay. Well, anyway, there's my two cents on that. I'm concerned, though, that, I mean, Mr. Dahman, can you tell me again? And I think we've talked about this before. What is the timeframe for students to be quarantined or isolated? Like, if they're in close contact?
With the new process, students who normally would have, students and staff who would have been quarantined for 10 days or up to 10 days are able to return after five days, provided that they don't have symptoms.
Right, no, I'm sorry. Let me stop you. I don't want to try to be rude. I just don't want you to talk about, I need to rephrase the question. So like, a close contact? If, you know, I had COVID and Mike's sitting next to me, how long of a timeframe can we sit here before he becomes a close contact?
I think I understand the question. And again, if I start going down a direction that isn't what you meant, jump in and stop me. But I think if I'm understanding the question correctly, to be considered a close contact, you're within six feet of someone for 15 or more minutes, non-consecutively throughout the day.
Okay. So, okay. And that, and most of those occur at lunch, you said before?
I think lunch is one time when they occur because for students, if they are, if they're both the student who tests positive and the person who is considered a possible close contact, if both of them are masked appropriately, then that six feet goes down to three feet. But we know that during lunch, students aren't masked. So there's more likelihood of spread and more likelihood of people being considered a close contact during their lunchtime.
Would you consider what the CDC said? I'm just trying to decrease the number of close contacts in my thinking here. Would you consider what the CDC said? That if a student or staff is wearing a cloth mask and another one is wearing a cloth mask or greater? That the CDC states that 20 minutes is the allowed time for that?
My understanding of the CDC recommendations and what we've approved tonight is that our recommendations mirror, or our new protocol mirror the CDC recommendations, and which are also, have also been adopted by DHS and Rock County Public Health. So I would agree with the goal of having people come back as soon as we possibly can get them back in a safe manner. And I think that what the board approved tonight with giving that option to have that after five days, if those criteria are met, is going to help with our staffing issue. It's going to help with students who are missing school. And a question came up earlier about our legal authority to have differences in our isolation and quarantine process for people who are vaccinated versus unvaccinated. We've received legal advice from our legal counsel, but that definitely, we definitely have the authority to have that in place. And not only the authority, but by following CDC, DHS, and Rock County guidance, it puts the district less at risk for any potential losses down the road.
But if the CDC guidance says if you're wearing cloth masks and it's a close contact, you have up to 20 minutes, that would certainly help because what, how long are our lunchtimes?
They vary from school to school, and the amount of time that students are sitting next to each other during school varies.
But certainly, you could agree, though, that an additional five minutes being allowed would cut back on our close contacts, correct?
It should, yeah. Any increase to that amount of time would do that. And we certainly can look into whether that, CDC, the CDC has some additional guidance. It's extremely likely with what was passed tonight that it will happen as an agenda item at our next board meeting. And we can do some research on that and bring it back at the next board meeting.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number three, Human Resources Committee Report. Mr. Mullen, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, the Human Resources Committee met on January 5th. First item on our agenda was the Benefits Advisory Group Meeting Review. The Benefits Advisory Group met on December 21st. The first item discussed was an update on life insurance marketing efforts. Just to remind everyone, the current two-year rate guarantee is ending with WEA trust on June 30th. Staff from USI shared six new insurance quotes. These quotes are included in the handout and board docs, along with potential cost savings of each plan. The district is going to continue to review these quotes and also look into the impact on retirees if they were required to pay their benefit on their own after turning 65. The next item discussed was the other post-employment benefits. Al Jaeger from USI discussed how we compare with what is offered as a retirement benefit and what the current benefit costs. This led to comparisons and contrasts with our peer districts. Next steps, we'll be reaching out to key benefits consulting and employee benefit consulting firm to look into our benefits and report back with the financial impacts of various options. Um, the, basically, it's the healthcare and what it's currently costing us or. Oh, the life insurance is, well, there's a current plan where it's, Rich, can you help me here if I need it? So it's, there's a paid-up benefit. The current plan has the paid-up benefit at 65. Is that right? But that's not going to be available any longer. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other questions on that?
Carrie Bradley, was there anything else on your end that you wanted to add to that discussion on that topic? Okay.
Next item was a discussion and possible action on teacher compensation model. There's a detailed memo in board docs outlining the new compensation model. I'm just going to highlight a few points before seeing if Rich or Carrie would like to add anything. Following past salary negotiations, we felt the need to come up with a new compensation model that is more sustainable and predictable, while at the same time allowing us to offer competitive salaries in order to attract and retain quality staff. We feel that this new model accomplishes these goals. One thing to note that was changed since we last met is the addition of step S to allow for an additional year of movement down the matrix. Beginning next school year, all new hires will be placed on the new salary matrix. Current employees on steps A, C, and I will be moved to the new matrix. All other employees will continue off-matrix, but may transition to the new matrix by meeting requirements for a lane change, as outlined in the handout and board docs. No employee will be moved to the new matrix if the move results in a salary reduction. I also would like to take a second to thank all the members of the work group, both the administrators and the teaching staff who helped and contributed to this. It was truly a collaborative effort, and we appreciate everyone's efforts. Carrie or Rich have anything they wanted to add to that?
Yeah, that was a very thorough overview. There are a couple of things that I want to add to it just to make sure that the board is, is clear on it before the vote. Rick mentioned the work of the teacher model work group or the teacher compensation model work group. And I do want to reinforce that they did an outstanding job. With the recommendation that we're bringing to the board, we listened to input from that group and incorporated some of their feedback into that recommendation. A couple specifics on the model. The teacher salary matrix is included in board docs. And you can see it's a very similar model to what we've had in place before. But I want to highlight a couple of changes. There are fewer lanes, and lanes are the columns that teachers can move to the right on and receive additional compensation. So there are fewer columns or lanes. There's one additional step. So in our previous model, it went through step R. This model goes through step S. And the input, impact of that on teachers will be that every teacher, as they move through the system, if they're with our district long enough to get through step S, will receive one additional year of a $750 increase. And that $750 increase would stay with them throughout the remainder of their career. So that was put in in part because we have about 28 teachers who are currently at step R. And we wanted to make sure in our transition that we were giving them an opportunity for increased salary for the coming year. So adding that in will benefit them, not only for next year when they get that $750 increase, but also benefit them, that they'll have that, that one-time $750 increase when they move to step S will stay in place in their salary moving forward. Another thing that I want to highlight is that, and I think, again, Rick alluded to it, as we're determining the transition from our current staff, and the system that we have in place right now doesn't make for an easy transition to another system. So some teachers will be utilizing the new teacher salary matrix, while others will remain what we're calling off-matrix. And if they're off-matrix, they wouldn't be placed on the new grid in any location. But they would continue with their salary that they have right now for this current year, plus any annual step increases, a $750 step increase every year until they would get to that step S, even though they're off-matrix. And then every teacher, whether they're on the new matrix or off-matrix, would continue to see their salary increase or their salary change based on the negotiation on that base wage. The current base wage is $45,110. The board would continue to negotiate that on an annual basis with the Teachers Association. And any change to that, based on that negotiations, would raise the salary for every teacher in our system by that same amount. Taking a quick look through my notes to see if there's anything else in addition to what Rick had shared. I think one thing that's listed in the memo is that the salary schedule is structured to provide a competitive compensation. And we look at other schools in the Badger Conference at starting salary, average salary, and highest available salary. And we want to make sure that we're at or above that median of that group. Even though we're a low-revenue school district, we think it's important as we look for ways to both attract and retain a high-quality staff, that we may continue to make that comparison. And if we do see that we're falling behind, either at starting rate, average rate, or highest available rate, we would have the ability to make some changes as we would with any of our other employee groups because we look at that comparison with our other employee groups, too. Carrie, is there anything else in your notes that you want to make sure that we highlight? Why don't you step to the mic?
Uh, okay. In listening to both of you speak, I think you've hit all the major points. But I just want to emphasize a point. When we began the conversation, I had some ideas of what this product would look like. And we did the work, and we listened to the work group. And the product that we have ended up with after going through the process is not really what I had in mind when the process started. So I just want to emphasize, and Rich has mentioned it, too, that listening to the work group and taking that input was used to design what you have in front of you today. I think it is designed to be able to make changes and. I think it is designed to be able to make changes and be flexible to the marketplace like Rich has said as well. And in this financial world, we talk about sustainability, which is quite a challenge, but I'm leaning more toward the phrase, it's maintainable. We're not creating a system that is going to set up that we can't maintain, given our financial challenges. So those would be my comments, which I think were all pretty much said, but thank you for letting me say them as well.
So Carrie, just to, you said it wasn't the product you anticipated when you started, but is it a product you can live with and that you support?
Oh, absolutely. I think, oh, no, I, good question. No, I, you know how you have ideas, right? And you go into it thinking, oh yeah, we could do this, we could do that. And this was one of those experiences for me where going through the process and listening to people has resulted in a product that I am very satisfied with. I'm, I'm proud of our work. And yeah, so absolutely. The goal is to make sure that people didn't think less than they were now and to find something that we can move forward. So yes, absolutely. No, actually, I, it was, this is one of those, now I'm talking about the process. I don't want to go on too much here. This is the stuff I get excited about, okay? When you go through a process and you come out with a product that you didn't anticipate coming, that, that for you doesn't exactly what we were looking for the product to do. So thanks for the follow-up question. I didn't want to give you the impression that, that I wasn't a good giver. I'm actually proud of the work that we in the group did.
And as a numbers guy, I get excited that you get excited. And I'd like to reiterate what Rick said to Mr. Domon, like Carrie in your department and the Human Resources Department, this is a tremendous amount of work. I think the end product is really quality. And I, in my experience in the district, lived through quite a few different major changes. And the fact that you're really watching over teachers and not putting them somewhere lower than they exist now is really great. And I can't speak for teachers, but as an ex-teacher, I guess that would be greatly appreciated. So thanks for all of your time. It's very much appreciated.
There's one more thing that I'd like to add, just based on some questions that we got from teachers, I want to make sure that board members are clear on, on one, one kind of a potential scenario. If you look on the matrix, the, the new teacher salary matrix, and you go down the masters column all the way to step S, you can see that if someone is at step S and they have a masters and they're in the new matrix, they would have a salary of $68,610. A question that came, we, we have some teachers who are, whose salary is higher than that because they've moved lanes on our, under our current system that's being sunsetted. And their concern was when I referred to them being able to proceed up to step S, they asked, well, does that mean that $68,610 would be the highest that people could earn if they're off-matrix? And I, and I assured them that if they're off-matrix, they would continue to get those $750 annual step increases until their step gets to step S. So for instance, if they're on step P right now, they would still get Q, step Q, step R, and step S, even if their salary is higher than that $68,610. And I, I wanted to make, just because there were a couple of questions from teachers asking for clarity on that, I want to make sure that board members are, know that that's our, our intent with this.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that the board adopt the teacher compensation system as presented to begin the 2022-23 school year.
I'll second. There's a motion on the floor made by Rick, seconded by Leslie, to move that the board adopts the teacher compensation system as presented to begin in the 2022-23 school year. All in favor, respond with aye.
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 And opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Next. Next up was the substitute teacher daily rate update. On January 3rd, the substitute teacher daily rate was increased by $15 a day to $140. This increase matches what Janesville pays and hopefully will attract more subs and lead to fewer unfilled absences. Substant, or substitutes were made aware of this increase by teachers on call. Any questions about that? And our last item is a discussion and possible action on an additional one-year 1.0 FTE English learning teacher at Milton West Elementary School. As outlined in the attached memo, administration is recommending approval of hiring one 1.0 FTE at West for the second semester. The primary focus of the additional staff would be literacy for second and third grade students and funding for this position would come out of our federal funds. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the addition of one-year 1.0 FTE English learner teacher position at Milton West Elementary School for the second semester of the 2021-22 school year as presented.
I'll second that. There's a motion on the floor made by Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve the addition of a one-year 1.0 FTE English learner teacher position at Milton West Elementary School for the second semester of the 2021-22 school year as presented. Any questions? Harry, none. All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, nay. That motion carries.
That's it, Mike.
Thank you so much, Rick, for all of your work on the Human Resources Committee. Always appreciated. Moving on to new business, open enrollment alternative applications.
I'll move to approve the 2021-22 open enrollment alternative applications as presented.
Motion on the floor made by Dave, seconded by Leslie to approve the 2021-22 open enrollment alternative applications as presented. Any discussion? Harry, none. All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving down to number five, miscellaneous, action on staffing reports.
Leslie got it.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor made by Rick, seconded by Leslie to approve the staffing report as presented. Any discussion? Mr. Domon?
I, I just want to, we don't typically identify individuals who are on the staffing report for, for a call-out because we, we value every single employee that we have across our school district. But I do want to note the pending retirement of Susan Probst that's listed there. Susan has been serving the district and continues to serve the district in an extremely valuable manner, always taking into account what's best, what's best for kids and as, as do all of our staff. But I just, I wanted to make sure that we note that effective at the end of this fiscal year, Susan will be retiring and we will be working on identifying a replacement for her.
I'd like to add to that, that some shoes can't be filled. So it looks like we'll be looking for a new pair of shoes because years will certainly not be filled and will be missed. So the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carries. Action on gifts and donations. Second. Motion on the floor made by Dave, seconded by Leslie to approve the gifts and donations, always with gratitude. Any discussion? Harry, none. All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mr. Domon, meeting dates for upcoming meetings. I know there's a board meeting on the 24th.
The next regularly scheduled board meeting is on January 24th at 6:30. We have a finance committee meeting that is scheduled for February 2nd at noon. And we're looking with the finance committee to utilize that first, first Wednesday of each month through Feb, beginning in February through May for finance committee meetings. So if we can pencil those in, the first Wednesday of each month, starting with Wednesday, February 2nd, and that will be a noon start and that will be up in the second floor conference room. And then we also have the State Education Convention that takes place in Milwaukee from January 19th through the 21st.
And I recall last board meeting, I might be muted, sorry. No, I'm not. There was some discussion of a curriculum meeting, is that still in the works?
Yeah. Ryan, do you have an update on that? Is there a data set for that?
Yeah. What is it said here tonight? We're, we're looking the week of the 17th. If any time that you are available with the number one topic of the, what we're going to be in the calendar for this week.
And that, that is the week of the, of the state conference. I don't know if the committee has availability on the 17th or the 18th on that Monday or Tuesday of that week to me. I'll go Monday the 17th.
I could do the 17th in the afternoon, like mid to later afternoon.
Shelley, you saying yes to that?
I can make that work.
What time would be best for you, Jen?
4:30?
So 4:30 on Monday, January 17th, is that where we landed?
Does that work for you, Shelley? Mr. Ruggles, does that work for you?
Rich, can I just mention something about the convention? I, I sent out some of the changes to the convention to all of you. They're canceling the luncheons, masking is required. I know with the surge, some of you are reconsidering going to the convention. The, the cancellation date is this Friday. So if you, if you change your mind and you, you don't want to attend the convention, please let me know before Friday morning. I can cancel. I have, Mike, I have you signed up remotely. I can, I can sign you up to, to attend virtually and to get all the recordings. You still have to pay for that, but you know, let me know if you're interested, so.
Okay. Thank you.
But at this point, I have everyone who said yes. And I think that's everybody, except Mike virtually and then Leslie. So everybody else has signed up at this point.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session per State Statute 19.85. Subpoint was, some point C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this is in response to superintendent evaluation, superintendent contract extension.
Second.
So the motion has made by, been made by Leslie, excuse me, seconded by Rick. We'll do a roll call vote. Shelley? Jen? Rick? Mike is a yes, Leslie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Joe?
He's a yes.
So we are in executive session. And we can take a quick break if anyone needs to use the bathroom or just take us, stretch their legs.
I just wanted to apologize for my let's vote comment.
No, you're good. I don't.
No, I was frustrated and I shouldn't have said it.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't take that.
Thank you.
You're, you're, we're all good. Always will be, Leslie.
Appreciate it.
Are you okay?
Am I okay?
Yeah.
I have had like a barcule thing going on.